...a meeting to order, I'd ask you to join me in saying my allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Miss, can I ask you to call the roll, please?
Harleen Kane. Ray Eckerbee.
Here.
Phil Lukens.
Here.
Martin Meyer.
Here.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Sam Powers.
Here.
Ron Richards.
Here.
Allison Rittercoach.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a forum. I'd ask the council to give me a motion to approve the agenda for tonight. And again, a reminder, if there's any item on the agenda that you do have a conflict of interest, please note that prior to voting.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the agenda. Are there any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also have in your packages the minutes from the August 20th council meeting. I'd ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 20th council meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approved those minutes. Are there any questions, corrections, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have in your packages, uh, under claims bills in between for $216,974.63. I would accept a motion to approve those bills in between.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between for $216,974.63.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have current claims of $122,74.30. I'd accept a motion to approve those current claims.
Make a motion to approve the current claims in the amount of $122,74.30.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the current claims. Are there any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also, we have Wells Fargo credit card charges of $7,360.30. I'd ask for a motion to approve those charges.
Make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card charges of $7,360.30.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve, uh, the Wells Fargo credit card charges. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Tonight, we do have a presentation from Jim Jones. Uh, one of the things that, uh, we wanted to take a good, close look at was the utility rate study for the city of Hot Springs, basically our water sewer. And, uh, it's important that we have rates that are compatible with the upcoming projects that we have ongoing, that we need, uh, to find either finance or find grants for. And if our rate structure is not such that we can obtain those grants, it will greatly cause a financial burden to the city. So, we've asked, uh, Jim to come down. He's a technical assistance provider with Midwest Assurance Program. And, uh, Jim, would you step forward and, uh, share with the council and, uh, our public, uh, some of your findings, please?
Yeah, happy to. Uh, like George said, I'm Jim Jones. I'm with the Midwest Assistance Program.
And Jim, can you, uh, maybe get that a little bit closer so that, uh, the camera and everything will pick it up? Thank you.
Is this better?
Sure.
I can speak a little louder, too. I'm Jim Jones. I'm with the Midwest Assistance Program. It is a nonprofit, uh, entity that specializes in water and moist water, technical assistance. I was asked, um, to review your rate structure and offer an opinion and advice on what to do with your water rates. So, I, uh, I reviewed your water rates and I've met with the Public Works Committee and we've talked about where you're at currently and maybe where you want to get to. And ultimately, my recommendation is going to be that, uh, you're in a position now that really you should be considering increasing your water rates. I don't really have a presentation. Uh, I'll answer any questions you have. I got a few notes from the, um, committee meeting that I can go through.
Okay. Is there anyone on the council that has any questions that they would like to ask Jim? Jim, is it, uh, do you, uh, consider that, uh, we need to have a real substantial rate increase at this time?
Uh, it's a great question. No, I, I think, uh, Hot Springs overall has done a fantastic job, uh, not only in its past, uh, rate increases, but the whole rate structure is set up beautifully. I wouldn't change the rate structure at all. I think you're set up really well. Uh, the last rate increase, uh, passed by the council in, um, 2011. So, you're in a position now where you should be probably forecasting another rate increase so that you can keep them small and not have a, a large jump. If you put your water rates off too long, when you do have a project, a substantial project, and even higher operation and maintenance costs, you have a substantial jump in your rates in order to offset or pay for those costs.
Okay, and could you, uh, explain to the council and to the public, uh, what the implications would be if we failed to do that in, say, our major road construction project where we plan to do a major replacement of water and sewer lines through the city, uh, multi, uh, hundreds of thousand dollar projects?
Sure.
How would we fund that, or?
Well, the two main funding mechanisms in the state are SRF, the State Revolving Loan Fund, and USDA, rule development dollars. And you currently, your rates are, um, are too low to be eligible for SRF grant dollars. So, uh, my recommendation is going to be, uh, if possible, to raise your rates, uh, maybe by January 1st in order to meet that minimum. And the state minimum for 5,000 gallons of water used a month, your rate needs to be at least $30. And it currently is not that high.
Okay, approximately, do you know what percentage, uh, you would have to raise?
Yeah, it's really not, uh, it's, you're, you're not gonna have to raise rates much to get there. Um, your water bill right now is broken out into, uh, a fixed charge and a usage charge. And I would recommend that you raise each of those a little bit in order to hit that $30 a month. Yeah.
Can you explain why you recommend that?
Yeah, I'm recommending, um, that you increase both the fix and the usage charge so that not one, um, group of customers, group of users, is impacted differently from the other. So, we look at, when we look at rate structure for fairness, we look at, well, what if it's a single person at home that's using 1,000 or 2,000 gallons a month? And what would their charge be? Typically, your retirees or fixed income folks versus maybe a family of four, five, or six, and, uh, they may use 5,000, 6,000, 7,000 gallons a month. What would their charge be? But you have fixed expenses. If you don't sell any water, if you don't pump any water, you still have expenses for a water utility, for a water system. So, part of your rate structure is fixed charge and part of your structure is the usage charge. Your fixed cost should be made up from the fixed charges. So, you're not in a position wherever, where your revenue is not gonna cover your expenses, even if no one's using water. Does that make sense?
Go ahead.
So, I looked at a fixed charge on a 5/8 inch meter, uh, to be $18 a month. And for, um, every 1,000 gallons of water use, I looked at $3.15 per 1,000. And if those two were your rates, you would cover, uh, the $30 a month needed, uh, to be eligible for, uh, SRF state DGNR grant dollars.
Currently, our rates are 17.43 for the fix, so his recommendation to raise to 18 from $17 to $43. And the cost per 1,000 gallons is currently $2.69. The recommendation is to raise it to $3.15.
That's right.
Okay. And how do the rates in Hot Springs compare with other communities around the state?
It's really easy, uh, to say, well, how do we compare with other communities? And, and I would say you're, you're lower than most communities. But every community is unique and you have to cover your cost. And every water system has different costs and the rates have to be high enough to pay for those costs. So, to say, uh, how do I compare with Rapid City or how do I compare with Watertown? It's really totally unique system, so it's, I, I would probably caution you and say, don't go down the road where I want to compare water rates here to water rates somewhere else because each system's unique and you're gonna have different costs. And, uh, you may have different interest rates, you may have different grants that have come into the paths. Your system might be 100 years old and someone else's system might be 5 years old. So, those rates are gonna definitely be different. If you have infrastructure in the ground that you haven't maintained, you might have very low rates. And another system might have brand-new water made and service lines that are less than five years old. Well, their, their debt's gonna be higher and their rates are gonna be higher to pay for that debt.
Are there any other, uh, questions? Um, I'm sorry, I'm kinda dominated in my microphone.
I would say right now, it, it's a, it's a good time to consider a rate increase because essentially, your water budget today is a net zero budget, meaning the revenue that you take in, it's going right up to your costs. And, uh, it'll be interesting to see at the end of this year if maybe you've lost money as a water utility because it's been a fairly wet year. The first part of the year was fairly wet. I think some of your water usage will be down. Now, water use is your only revenue to the water system. So, on a very wet year, when customers don't use as much water, you're not gonna be gaining as much revenue. So, it'll be possible, you've been really even at net zero the last couple of years. This year, you might actually see that your revenues were not high enough to offset your costs. So, you'll be dipping in your reserves to cover those costs.
And that puts us in a, in an unhealthy position.
Right.
For future projects.
Right. I mean, you, you guys as a, as a city have done just a fantastic job over the years. You're in a position to look at small rate increases today in order to remain grant-eligible and, and not be in a position where some of your neighbors are having some substantial rate increases that are not politically popular. And, uh, you know, no one wants to see 18, 19, 20, or $30 a month water bill increases and that's what some of your neighbors see.
Absolutely. And Ray, I think, uh, we can thank you. You were on the council and also the water department that kind of fixed those rates, uh, early on.
You're back, you know, and, uh, it's been a long time since we raised him rates and I know it's gonna create a little bit of, uh, problems, you know, with our fixed water rates and, uh, our water usage, but it's someplace that we have to go in order to, uh, to achieve these loans and grants and, you know, to fix our infrastructure down Main Street. And, uh, we've been doing it all over the city in the past and we've been doing a great job of, uh, fixing all the water rates, but, uh, this one project, I'm sure it's gonna be a costly one and, uh, it needs to be done.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the audience? Yeah, see a hand.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Jose, come up.
Yeah, my name is Jose Ariana. I live in Indianapolis Avenue and I was wondering why does the water pressure has to be so high? I have, I called a phone and he put a reduction valve because, you know, I put a tax on it five nights and you can see it that, uh, you get to see like green stuff that leaks from the joints. So, I don't have a problem no more because I had to pay a plumber to put a reduction valve in my house. I don't see the need to have such a high pressure. The higher the pressure, the more water you're gonna use. And I don't see a need to go about, what, 60, uh, 45 pounds per square inch, decide? And who control this? And who controls the pressure on the water in Hot Springs?
In that, uh, I'll go ahead and refer you to Kim to go ahead and take a specific complaint and we'll have, uh, our water department come out and take a look at your specific case and just, uh...
Well, I don't think it's a complaint, it's a mistake.
Well, and I'll say too, a lot of our water, there's, there's two loops that work in the system of our water system right now. All of our water is gravity fed and it has to reach a certain height of foot.
Uh-huh, for gravity.
To, to hit. So, you're in here, yeah, you're in an area that just gets higher so that other people that are in an area that has, have lower pressure has enough pressure. And so, it kinda has to stabilize itself. The, the construction that you saw on South Garden Street at the bottom of the South Dakota Hill, right near the, um, the upper bridge, um, that put up, if, that is supposed to help equalize the pressure as much as possible throughout the town. That was, uh, a way to link those two loops so that the pressure will equalize through the two loops. We were having higher pressure problems prior to that. We were hoping that that would alleviate some of them. But what I'm, I'm still gonna keep in touch with you. I'll talk with Sean and see if there's anything else that he knows of in your area that might be causing that.
Well, I, I saw the plumber.
I know, but...
I hired a plumber.
But if you're having that problem, maybe other people are too...
That's right. I worry about all of it.
Right, right.
My problem is small.
But we also don't want you to get a lot of back pressure on your system either, so...
Right. He told me that I have to be corrected before he found me and he explained I was it, but I didn't know, I wasn't aware of it.
Yeah, we'll take care of it. We'll at least keep in touch with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the council, or did you have Jim?
Yeah, Jim, I have a question for you. You had mentioned that to, to qualify for other grants, we need to get up to at least $30 a month.
That's right.
How long do we need to be there before we qualify for the grants? Do we qualify immediately? Do we need to be there six months? Do we need to be there a year?
I think most utilities probably shoot for at least six months before, um, filling out an application.
That is something that the, the grant folks look at, uh, when they...
Yep.
When they're returning, whether you're gonna qualify for a grant.
Yeah. Now, currently, you're on the state water plan. You have a well and a water storage tank listed on the DGNR's website. And because you're not grant-eligible, they were, uh, only able to forecast a loan for that project. Now, I don't know if and when that project will move forward, but it's on the plan and the state expects that you'll have an application someday. And I've kinda penciled out, uh, just a loan scenario for payback for roughly a $1.45 million out of a project. By bringing those rates up to the $30 minimum per 5,000 gallons of use, you'll be also eligible for grants. And Hot Springs is an excellent candidate, uh, to get grant dollars. A, a big driver of, uh, grant dollars comes from median household income. And Hot Springs is in a position to, because you have lower median household income, you're in a position to get, uh, maybe maximum grants or from both the state or USDA, you know.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just one question, Jim, I guess, for a little better understanding. The, the reason for the minimum that the state has is that, is their thinking there that it assumes that if you're not charging a minimum, then therefore you're probably not maintaining your system as you should? And so, part of their due diligence is, uh, to ensure that a community has, is charging a proper amount for the services so that their grant or loan dollars are well spent?
That's exactly, that's exactly, you know, they're trying to, to get all communities to put a fair value on, on water. And, uh, this is one way they do it.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Jim. I, uh, really appreciate the time and effort you put in, uh, helping us and, uh, council. We've got some, some work to do and, uh, Public Works will be, uh, discussing this and coming up with a proposal, so, uh, we really appreciate that and we'll keep in contact with you and making sure we've got the proper i's dotted correctly and the t's crossed, the l's should be...
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
At this time, we move on to communications from the public. Are there any communications from the public? Seeing none?
I got one.
Whoop, I can't...
Jose.
Yes, go ahead. Jose, if you could come up to the microphone, please?
Uh, yes, uh, you know, I was wondering, how come we got so much trash in this city? I mean, if you're ready to go, you see jars, black jars, that are more than eight inches tall, the grass, and that's against the ordinance? So, how come those people that don't care about the fellow citizens by doing that, you know, they should be, uh, they penalized, but they should be corrected? Look, if you black yard is more than eight inches tall, we're gonna call it for you or we're gonna do something and we're gonna charge you for that. Because some people want to rent places or do business and when other people come to do business or to buy property or to rent and they come and they see all these, you know, yards with like a jungle, you know? It just doesn't make sense. And I think that the city have the force to enforce it. Okay, if more than eight inches, no, no, you have to call it. If you don't call it, we're gonna call it for you and we're gonna put a lien on your property. So, when you sell, you know, somebody has to pay for that. That's what they do in Hongo, Florida, where I come from. So, they're putting a lien on your property and, you know, because it's not just, it's just not just that decent citizen that pays taxes and behaves has to stop it from other citizens than they could care less because they know they're gonna get away with it no problem. Now, if they have to know that they wanna be penalized or not penalized, corrected, then they might think of it about behaving that way. It's both fair for the citizen that behaves, they tax it, they care of the backyard, they love it, love the city, love the community and Joseph, I like what I made. I just feel that when you drive around and then people are holding, you know, maybe that's a custom, I mean, I come to every city, you know, this is my first time in a small town. I like it, I love it here. I've been here three years, nice people, you know, uh, but it could be better. It just could be better. And it's just simple of enforcing the ordinance. It's just as simple as that. And they, I was told about, and somebody mentioned that the city was afraid to be sued. I am the city, sue me, sue me. I'm not gonna live in the, under this terror of this, you know, that if you don't behave or you start rocking the ball, you know, we're gonna sue. Well, I mean, okay, I'm not, I'm not afraid of being sued. I mean, I know what I'm doing, I'm gonna ride, I think I'm right. I mean, that's really tough in the, in the court and the, you know, justice court, but it just doesn't make sense to me. It's just so simple to do it mean that. All right, thank you.
Well, we, again, uh, appreciate you bringing that to our attention. I know that, uh, uh, and one way that you can help us is, uh, also by ensuring that, uh, we are aware of those particular, uh, neighborhoods or na, uh, individual properties that, uh, that, that need that. We've had a very busy summer with our development coordinator. We've got, uh, these one D. Uh, we've had over $2.7 million worth of new construction. Uh, he's been busy, uh, making sure that, uh, those codes are enforced. And so, we, we can use some assistance. And I think that, Kim, we do have a system in place where we give out warnings, uh, to people when we do find, uh, properties that don't meet the ordinance and, and as a last resort, we do go in and know those and, and, uh, and cut them down. So, if you could, uh, if you've got a particular property that you're concerned about that maybe we haven't caught, I would encourage you to, uh, give us, give us a call and, uh, we'll go ahead and give the appropriate warning and, uh, we won't, uh, implicate you as the one who complained either.
Yeah, I think probably the problem is right here. Look, people don't come to the meetings. You know, they don't come, they don't care. That's not right. Yeah, no.
And I agree, we agree. Thank you. Are there any other communications from the public? Hearing none, we move on to personnel actions. And I believe that we can take, uh, items A through L as, uh, one action. Accept a motion to approve those actions.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel actions A through L.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, we, uh, approve personnel actions A through L. Are there any questions, comments, or discussions?
I have a question. I wanted just to get, and maybe Kim or Misty can help me on this, and exactly how are we differentiating the step increases and the longevity increase? And how do they do that as far as timing goes?
There are, most employees are hired at 80% of their top of scale is what we call it, but it's not necessarily top. Uh, it goes 80, 86, 90, something, 91, 98, that one hundred. Um, and then longevity is on your yearly anniversary after you've reached that top of scale. Good question. It's on about all our wage resolutions. Look at that scale.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving these personnel actions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to committee reports, uh, administrative and finance. Uh, Bob?
Administrative and finan... Finance went today at City Hall at 1:00. Mayor Cotty, Misty, Kim, Don with the library, Jason from the golf course, Don Osten, myself for a presence. One old business item, all updates you on? Uh, we've had some action on it. Uh, we've been looking at whether Bros Engineering was gonna do, uh, Canada Sidewalk Design for us. Uh, and it was decided that, uh, until the Army Corps of Engineers in the state of South Dakota, uh, actually give us approval, uh, to include the Canada Design along with the road reconstruction. There's no sense continuing, uh, considering whether we're gonna do that. So, we're closing that until we get, uh, approval from the Army Corps and, uh, and the state of South Dakota about the Canada Sidewalk. Number of new business items. We had a cell phone request, um, that we denied. The, uh, the employee felt like they needed some, um, uh, cell phones so that they could be in communication. They do have a landline, uh, that the city can reach out to and form for emergency purposes, so we denied that request. Uh, on the agenda tonight is, uh, the cable franchise ordinance. We talked a little bit about that from Golden West Cable Vision. We also discussed proposed increases to the Silicon Hills Golf Course rates for 2009. Uh, it should be an agenda item for the next council meeting. Don Osten requested, uh, need a request of the city to consider a land swap for some property he owns near the old armory for city property on Canton Avenue. This would be in line with, uh, workforce housing in the city and give us some additional options, uh, for consideration. So, we're looking at what that option would be presented to the council when we're ready. We got a request by Don Johnson with the, uh, the library. Uh, she's, uh, asking the council to approve an additional regular part-time position of the library. Funding for the position for the remainder of this year would come from the current library salary budget. Funding for the position in 2019, if approved, would come from within the current proposed 2019 library budget. This will be an agenda item. Don has seen an increase... Don has seen an increase in the grade school, school service that are looking for resources from the, from the library. We'll be looking at that. The next, that big finance committee will be the first Tuesday, Monday, on Friday, State Hall.
Monday.
Monday.
Hey, thank you, Bob. Airport Advisory Committee, Bill?
Yeah, the airport advisory committee met Thursday, August 30th at 8:00 a.m. at the airport. There were ten members, all ten members, or eleven members of the committee were present. Basic items that were discussed was the success of the balloon festival. And I guess just to highlight, there's been a common thread of comments regarding how well the various city departments are working together and the assistance that the golf course provided in providing a maintenance card for Olivia with Chamber Commerce to get around and show people. It just, there just continues to be good cooperation with the city departments and we certainly appreciate that. The mayor may speak more to the balloon festival, but there was just lots of good comments. So it's a very good happening from all standpoints. We also discussed the glider club hangar lease. And my understanding is that Kim has invited, had invited any concerned members to attend a meeting to discuss the increase in the amount of the lease. No one attended, so we'll continue to pursue the increase of that annual lease. As we just addressed the personnel actions, the summer help, their last day was the 30th or the 31st, I'm not sure which, and he is interested in continuing to work next year. And he was a good team member and fit very well with Ed Jensen's good work that he does out there. Tracy Bastian, city engineer, is working on the required spill control prevention and countermeasures plan and is making good progress on that even though the template from the EPA wasn't as user-friendly as we'd hoped. And then we discussed that the airport budget was still intact and we had the first reading of that tonight.
Thank you, Bill. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Ron?
Next meeting will be 13th September, 7:00 p.m. at the New York Center.
Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Arlene?
Our next meeting will be tomorrow evening, five o'clock at the library.
Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Allison?
Our next meeting will be September 20th at noon at Evans Plunge. And there was just one thing I wanted to mention to the council that I didn't note last time in the report, that there is a training that Chris is interested in going to that is for Hot Springs in Colorado. So we may, we'll be seeing that coming through, and she was very interested in getting some other input from other people that also run hot springs. And then also, to Kim, just wanted to note that the Puppy Plunge was amazing event and raised some money for a good cost. So I thought that was really good to see yesterday, right? That's great.
So one's just still going to the dog.
Yes, exactly.
We may have to bill the puppy.
There might actually be something to that, right?
There was actually a lot of talk about, when's our dog park coming?
Marty Parks and Recreation, Beautification, Culture Development.
Parks and Recreation met today here at the New York Center. Intermediates Barbara Walters, Allison Ritter Bush, Thrice DeBoer, Jared Halligan, Dwayne Stanley, Mark Seid, Tim Tash, and myself. Old Business regarding the stage at Centennial Park. Jess Scoot completed work on the electrical and light design for the stage. However, he did not tie into the existing electrical to the main power pole as there was a blockage in the conduit to that point. He will be submitting a quote for the cost to tie into the power from the pole adjacent to the stage. Allison Ritter Bush provided an update on the 2018 Youth Mountain Bike Series race in Hot Springs, which is slated for September 30th at the Southern Hills Golf Course. The race is sponsored by Black Hills Youth Mountain Bike Association, inscriber, and registration is free. Registration for the race will be at 1:00 p.m. with the race beginning at approximately 10:00 p.m. Lunch will be provided by the Southern Hills Rec Center Initiative Organization. Even though we do have some volunteers and very pleased to see somebody is providing lunch, still be looking for some volunteers for the event, so spread word for that. The event can be found on Facebook if you look for 2018 Youth Mountain Bike Series. There's more information on the Facebook event page there. Participants following the race will be invited to Evans Plunge for a swim. Parks Committee also admitted, revisited some of the options which had been explored in the past for the old armory building. Tim Tash and Thrice DeBoer provided information on some of the previously considered plans and cost estimates associated with those plans. Meeting will continue to research. Barbara Walters provided updates on the Disc Golf Clinic. The Second Annual Disc Golf Clinic will be this Sunday, September 9th at 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Butler Park. Teammates from Anova Disc Golf Champion Pro Team will be instructing the clinic, Lacy Brugler from Ohio, Ohio, and Don Smith from California. Parks Committee also discussed the ongoing maintenance issues and parks and work orders associated with these. And our next meeting will be Tuesday, October 2nd at 3:00 p.m. at the New York Center.
Okay, thank you, Marty. Planning and Zoning Commission, Allison?
Next meeting will be September 19th at 7:00 p.m. at Seaport.
Thank you. Public Safety, Bill?
The next meeting will be Wednesday, September 9th at 2:00 p.m. at City Hall.
And Public Works, Bob?
Public Works met on August 28th at City Hall. Mayor Cotty, Ray, Kim, Marty, Scott and myself for a presence. Old Business Items, Houston Avenue Sewer Project. After the weather delay, the hope is that project will be starting soon. The alley tree trimming is paused. City crews have had a lot of work that they need to take care of. That trimming should resume in the fall. The warranty work here at the New York Center has been completed and had to do some work maybe under warranty. The work repairs that the council approved for the Evans Pump House, wastewater removal plant, New York Center, and City Hall is scheduled to begin this week. Freedom Trail Expansion Bridge has now crossed Fall River. And that bridge was constructed in-house by the city employees, so kudos to them. Can also be seen on the city of Hot Springs website. There's still some final work that's ongoing and a ribbon cutting ceremony is planned for late September or early October. And again, thank you to all the city staff that have been working on this project and it's been going on a while and we'll be excited to see it completed. New business, you all heard from Jim tonight about the water rate increases. We're also gonna be looking at sewer rate increases along with that to make sure that all of those funds are generated enough to pay to take care of unnecessary repairs and new infrastructure as needed. We also looked at a change to the sewer ordinance to eliminate sunset clause on improvements. And that ordinance is Chapter 21 wastewater and sewer storm limits. And it limits the cost recovery of any of those upgrades a contractor may make to the sewer to ten years. And I felt that's not, not appropriate that those costs are fixed. And they shouldn't sunset, something shouldn't have advantage of coming in on year 10 and not being assessed for those improvements. Flood wall repairs, we talked a little bit about that, some requests for the poles will may be necessary to complete the minor repairs to the flood wall. And Boulder Falls, the city will meet with the contractor to discuss warranty items meant to be taken care of from the Boulder Falls project. Also, we're up to, I think it wasn't discussed in the meeting, but the city crews, the water and the sewer folks are up on Alton Avenue between Fourth and Fifth Streets, and they're replacing a block of water line there. And they're doing just a fantastic job. They've been making sure that the residents up there, the garbage has been picked up, the garbage truck cans make it to the residents because of the construction. The city crews have been collecting those garbage cans everywhere, just making sure they get to the garbage trucks. I want to thank them for that, too. They're going above and beyond to make sure that the citizens are taken care of. So thank you for that. Ray, do you have a comment?
No comment.
No comment. The next public works meeting will be September 11th, 3:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Bob, they used the asphalt zipper?
Yes, they did use the asphalt zipper. Thank you for mentioning that. It was probably the afternoon after the, after they used it, I went down to talk with them and asked them if they used it, but I wasn't there when they did. Sean said that they had and they turned a eight-hour day of work into two hours. So it was tremendous. You can see that there are nice clean cuts on the asphalt, so it should be, it's tough to repair it when the time comes to do that. The asphalt zipper is in use and the city crews seem to be just ecstatic about it. So thank you, council, for approving that.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Ray. Just one thing, I just want to highlight on the tree trimming. Again, it is individuals' responsibility to trim the trees in their property. And unfortunately, the city crews have been called out to make some of the alleys passable. And so I just put a plug in that you do have trees that are extending outside and interfering with public right of ways. It's the responsibility of the property owner to take care of that. Southern Hills Economic Development, Marty?
Southern Hills Economic Development, otherwise known as SHC, will be meeting Fridays, September 21st at noon, locations yet to be determined.
Okay, thank you. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, the last advisory committee hashed out in-depth discussion on the rates, golf course rates for the coming year and made a recommendation to Administrative Finance Committee today. And those will be coming before the councils for it. Volunteer Fire Department, Ron?
Next meeting will be 11th September, 7:00 p.m. at Hot Springs Golf Course.
The Comprehensive Plan, Sam?
We've not had a next meeting yet. We did schedule our next one, we'll keep you updated on that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on in our agenda, we have some ordinances to consider. We'll have a second reading of Ordinance 1190. This is an ordinance providing for the amendment and revision of the fine and bond schedule for the city of Hot Springs to approve the first ordinance, or first reading of that ordinance at the last council meeting. It mainly deals with clarification of fines, counties for fireworks violations. I would accept a motion to approve Ordinance 1190.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 1190, an ordinance providing for the amendment and revision of the fine and bond schedule for the city of Hot Springs.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve Ordinance 1190. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask Misty if you'd call the roll, please.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Ray Echope?
Yes.
Phil Lukens?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is the first reading of Ordinance 1191, the 2019 appropriation ordinance or upcoming budget. And before I do ask for a motion on that, I want to thank you as a council for the work and effort that you put into reviewing our budget. I remind everyone that our budget is structurally balanced, which means that our revenues equal our expenditures. It's important to note that major revenues do come from tax sources, so it's important that we as a community, as a council, do everything we can to stimulate growth in our community, both from the tourism's prospect and from bringing additional businesses and people to Hot Springs. And I think it's important to recognize and realize the hard work that Misty and Kim and the department heads did in bringing this ordinance, or bringing this budget together from the bottom up, that each of the departments went through their needs. Misty and Kim, the department heads, made the appropriate adjustments to keep the budget balanced. So I think that's an important thing to note as we consider this. Again, the appropriation ordinance is our plan for 2019, how we're going to operate. It is a plan. If exten, contingencies do come up, we do, you as a council have the right responsibility to approve and adjust that budget as necessary to meet those so that we can carry on the proper functions of the city government. With that said, I'd ask for a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1191.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1191, 2019 appropriation ordinance. Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Again, you do have a copy of the summary of that ordinance in your packages. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none?
No, sorry, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I saw that we're moving from 47 to 70 channels. I'm curious about, oh, different ordinance. Different ordinance. Oh, this is not real, this is 1192, more on 1191, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'd ask Misty if you would call the roll, please.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Ray Echope?
Yes.
Phil Lukens?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush?
Yes.
Thank you.
And again, that motion approved, and again, thank you, council, for your efforts in getting this budget done. We move on to the first read of Ordinance 1192. And this is an ordinance that grants franchise to Golden West Cable Vision. And you do have a copy of that in your packages. I would ask for a motion to approve the first read of Ordinance 1192.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 1192, this is a real honor, so it builds me. An ordinance granting a franchise to Golden West Cable Vision Inc. Communications to construct and maintain a cable communication system in the city of Hot Springs. And our city attorney has advised us that we need to reallow findings of that ordinance. Findings. In a review of the renewal proposal and application of Golden West Cable Vision Inc. grantee, as a result of a public meeting, the city council makes the following findings. Finding number one, grantee's technical ability, financial condition, legal qualifications, and character were considered and approved at a full public meeting after due notice and a reasonable opportunity to be heard. Finding number two, grantee's plans for constructing, upgrading, and operating the system were considered and found adequate and feasible at a full public meeting after due notice and a reasonable opportunity to be heard. Finding number three, the franchise granted to grantee by the city complies with the existing applicable state federal laws and regulations. And finding number four, the franchise granted, grantee is non-exclusive.
I'll second that. Did you state that it was the first reading?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we do approve this first reading of the ordinance eleven ninety-two. And Allison?
Okay, so my question was regarding moving from the capacity of forty-seven to seventy channels and what that entails and what the, what the process would be in the timeframe.
We actually have Rick Reed from Golden West who was with us today and that was a capacity increase, but I'll let him go ahead and explain that. Any other questions you might have, you might, don't use them while I'm here.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Rick Reed. I'm the director of video services for Golden West. What that does is when we looked at the ordinance, the ordinance is pretty much mirror of what was in place. It just went through without data computing. We're beyond forty-seven channel, we're already practically beyond seventy, but the seventy is just, in today's technology, each of those seventy can do anything with five and nine certain channel. So seventy becomes two hundred, or seventy becomes three hundred and fifty or some number is what it could be. But it's just more of to get it in line with the current technical standard.
Okay, good question. Any other questions?
Doesn't Golden West already have a franchise in the city of Hot Springs? Why is there another ordinance for this?
It's expiry.
Oh, I see.
It's over. So we're renewing it. But you are right, we do have one.
I was probably going to take the word construct out of that head.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Could you explain non-exclusive?
Anyone else who's interested in petitioning the city to have a cable franchise can, but would have to follow the same rules and regulations that this one establishes.
By federal law, they're not exclusive.
Any other questions or comments?
I noticed we moved from monthly to quarterly. Was there a benefit to that?
We were receiving it quarterly before.
Okay.
And it's worked fine.
Yep. Okay. Okay, other questions? If not, Misty, I'd ask that you call role. And thank you for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rick.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Ray Echope?
Yes.
Phil Lukens?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council. And that first reading is approved. Moving on in the agenda to resolution, item A, Resolution twenty eighteen dash seventeen, I would ask for a motion to table this resolution. We did receive some additional information today from the Black Hills Council local governments that may change the wording on this resolution. So we don't want to obligate the city to something that we're not completely assured of how we go about obtaining that grant for machinery to chip or grind the solid waste material in our waste piles out at the maintenance facility. So those grant parameters have changed, and for that reason, I would ask for a motion to table Resolution twenty eighteen seventeen.
I make a, I make a motion to table Resolution twenty eighteen to offer at the city to apply to the South Dakota Solid Waste Management Program Grant. For the financial assistance for the acquisition of machinery needed to chip or grind the solid green waste piles in the all-grant program apartments and provide the local matching facilities.
A second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we tabled this resolution. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, item A, we do have a possible motion and discussion to approve and adapt updated personnel policies. And it mainly does make some minor modifications to some of our employees being called back or on call. Right now, for example, the people that we require to be on call during weekends, during off-duty hours, are required to stay within a certain distance of the community, not able to have the freedom. And we feel that that deserves additional stipends for those individuals that are on call so that, that they perceive that their, their freedom, their loss of their freedom is, is worth some additional monetary value. Also, there've been some concerns about personnel getting called back. And we think that increasing their pay, or rate of pay, is a fair consideration for that. And finally, when we do have an emergency snow day, our snow removal crews do not get the opportunity to go home and sit by a warm fire. They're out palming streets and we feel that that deserves some additional compensation for them. So you can see the motion there. I would ask that, accept a motion to reply, approve, and adopt these personnel policy. They've been discussed and recommended, recommended through the Admin Finance Committee. We've discussed those for several months. And this is a suggestion that they came forward with.